Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. As you can tell, we're missing one individual tonight, but I'm sure Commissioner Bowley sends his regards to everyone. I do have a question, though, before we start, just for the sake of clarification. It only requires two votes tonight to approve things, is that right?
Three, three votes for any ordinance.
Okay, three for any ordinance? Got it. Just so everybody understands the rules going in.
Otherwise, two.
Otherwise, the majority of the quorum, right? Okay. So, first item on the agenda then is to proclaim the month of September 2015 as Lawrence Arts Center Month. No representatives here this evening? Oh, wait, everybody's here. Well, come on up and somebody can -- the microphone, everybody come to the microphone. Would you like to tell us a little bit about everything that we're about to see over the next week?
Yes. This week and this month, we are celebrating the 40th anniversary, really of a public and private partnership that began in 1974 and continued when the Lawrence Arts Center fully opened its doors at the Carnegie Library Building in 1975. This is a grassroots community initiative that has responded, in partnership with the city, to the passions and interests of Lawrenceans for 40 years now, offering exhibitions, performance, and visual arts education. On Friday, from 5:00 to 9:00, during final Fridays, we are celebrating a community party on the street with downtown food vendors, activities for children, visual and performing arts, a 1970s-inspired, possibly flash mob, also a performance by Lawrence's own Truck Stop Honeymoon, and Lawrence's own Chuck Mead and his band, The Grassy Knoll Boys. We'll all be dancing on the street and celebrating this partnership with the city and our friends. Saturday night, we have a fundraiser for our financial aid program, a ticketed event inside the Lawrence Arts Center. And we're opening exhibitions of two Lawrence, one Lawrence artist, Albert Bloch, and who lived in Lawrence and died here after painting with the Blue Rider Group in Munich, Germany, and exhibiting with them, and an exhibition called Freak Power, celebrating some of Lawrence's idiosyncrasies curated by Daniel Watkins, a Lawrence guy, opening in our front gallery Friday night. We invite everyone to come down to the street party to celebrate the Lawrence Arts Center and our dedication to being here for the community for visual and performing arts. And behind me, I have Janice Hutchison, who was on the first Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission that established the Lawrence Arts Center in 1974, when Lawrence was led by Buford Watson, who had a visionary role to play in establishing the Arts Center. And we are grateful to that generation who got the ball rolling. Also, our chairman of the board, Joan Golden, Heather Hoy, Linda Raymond, and Rick Avril, and David Unikus from our marketing crew. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming this evening, and thank you, Jen, for being able to have the vision to be able to be a part of the beginning of the Arts Center. Somebody who got to know Buford Ward very well, and I know that there was a lot of help by Mrs. Watson in a push and understanding the arts and so many parts of culture in our community, I think that that was a pretty good team to help us help, well, I mean even, you know, in like 1983, I know as a young commissioner, they gave me a lot of push, you know, in being able to help support things. So, it was, it was a good time, and we've had a lot of great people like yourself and the rest of you who serve on the board make things happen, you know, at the Arts Center. So with that, I would be happy to read the proclamation.
I should add that Ann Evans would be here with us this evening, except she had a prior commitment, and she is an honorary host for the events of the weekend, and we have to add her into the mix of the team who made the Lawrence Arts Center possible, starting in the '70s. So, thanks to her.
Okay, very good. Yeah, Ann was a pretty big, important part of the Arts Center. Budget time has not been the same since Ann left, you know, it's just not been the same. It was quite a deal. Anyway, this is a proclamation. Whereas the arts play a unique and intrinsically valuable role in the lives of our families and our community, and whereas the Lawrence Arts Center was established by the Lawrence City Commission 40 years ago to provide visual and performing arts education, contemporary exhibitions, and performance to citizens of Lawrence and the region, and whereas the mission of the Lawrence Arts Center is to enrich and invigorate the community by offering the best in contemporary exhibitions, performance, and visual and performing arts education, and whereas the Lawrence Arts Center will celebrate its 40th anniversary on September 25th, 2015, at the Lawrence Arts Center, and whereas on this day, we celebrate the contributions, remarkable legacy, and significant enrichment that the Lawrence Arts Center has provided to our children, citizens, community, visitors, and city for the past 40 years, now therefore, I, Mike Amix, now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2015 as Lawrence Arts Center Month, and give full support towards enabling community members to participate in the arts and enjoy the rewards of learning through the arts. One last thing, it's a place to have fun, and that's one of the things that I hear so much. So, thank you all very much for all the hard work that you do for all the citizens, and I have a proclamation for you, and hopefully, we'll see you this weekend, okay? Thank you all for coming tonight, and have a good board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters are to be considered under one motion, will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for separate discussion? Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing none, we need to add claims to 236 vendors in the amount of $3,712,660.40, and payroll in the amount of $2,111,751.82. So with the addition of claims and payroll, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Herbert, second Vice Mayor Soden, and the questions or comments, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 3-0. Next item is the city manager's report, Diane.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We have a couple of items here notifying you and the public about a lean closure along 23rd Street between Louisiana and Alabama, coming up for a rather short timeframe to follow up on a water line improvement project that we had last year.
This is the one that we put off because of the closure of 27th Street while 31st wasn't open?
Correct.
And all that other work was going on, okay, thanks.
And then, we have the August 2015 monthly building permit report for you there, and again, we continue to track at a record pace as far as our building permits and the overall value of the construction in the community. So, the Development Services side of Planning and Development Services has been extremely busy in working through all those building permits and all that comes with that. We have been recently taping and broadcasting live the Planning Commission meetings, so this was something that we felt as a transparency item for the community would be an important board to cover. Planning items get a lot of interest, and it's a good opportunity for citizens to be able to really be from anywhere to watch that streaming live, watch it on our cable channel, or also be able to watch the playback of those discussions and really get a feel for the discussion that occurred, as opposed to just looking up the minutes. So, we will also be having the City Commission Vacancy Forum here this Thursday evening at 6:30 PM, and then, as you know, there will be also a forum of the special meeting of the commission on Thursday, October 1st at 5:45 PM, and those will also airing live on our, on our channel and streaming live as well, and then, they will also be available for viewing. We also have our regular monthly analytics report for all the things that we're doing on the city's website for you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Diane?
There were a lot of really great things about the Planning Commission meeting film. There's actually been quite a bit of feedback I've received about people are very grateful that's happening, so nicely done.
Great, wonderful.
That's true.
Excited to be able to offer that.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, we are on the idea of general public comment, and the public is allowed to speak to any of the items, to any items or issues that are not scheduled on tonight's agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. And as a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate those items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their names and address, and speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. So are there any items that are not on the agenda this evening that a member of the public would like to speak to? If so, please come to the microphone. Nothing, huh? Tough crowd. All right. Then, I guess we're on to the regular agenda. Golly, golly, I gotta read all this stuff again. Okay, the public is allowed to speak on any of the regular agenda items, or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name, and please, if you would, address the commission with your comments and questions, that would be great. So the first item on the agenda is conduct a public hearing regarding the property at 912 Chalk Hill Court and consider adopting Resolution Number 7139 declaring the house to be unsafe and dangerous, and to order the owner to repair or remove the structure, remove the structure within the specified time. Right.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Before you tonight is Resolution 7139 regarding 912 Chalk Hill Court. I'll give you a little bit of background information, I'll keep it brief, and if you have a question or want me to expand on that, we do so. This property is owned by Karen D. Brayley. We've had many issues over the years regarding the condition of the property. We filed complaints through court, in fact, Miss Brayley has an active warrant through the Davis County, excuse me, Municipal Courts of Lawrence for her arrest, for her to appear. We believe she lived somewhere in the Soto area. I've left multiple voicemail messages for her, asking her to respond for the last four or five months, have not had one return call. Due to the conditions of the property that has expanded in the last few years, we executed a search warrant July 9th of this year, and we went inside the structure and took some pictures, which are attached in the original memo dated July 29th, that was on the agenda on the August 11th meeting. So we're here tonight to adopt, to consider adopting Resolution 7139, which would basically give the owner of the property until October the 23rd to come up with a plan to rehabilitate or to take down. We also have added some language in that resolution that says, "We will come back to you November the 10th, provide you a final update." Something that's happened very quickly is with Capital Federal, they have, hold a mortgage on the property. I've been in contact with Mike Cast in their Topeka office, in fact, I just recently got information later this afternoon that they started the foreclosure process on September the 16th. They believe if the owner does not contest that, that it will be a relatively quick process, and you could expect the foreclosure of the property, sale of the property, to occur sometime in mid-November. Of course, if there's a protest, I'm not an expert in that, but I know it can delay the process significantly, and we could be talking months down the road. Our recommendation tonight would be to approve the resolution as it states with the dates identified, and hopefully, Capital Federal will be able to provide me some really good information in between now and November the 10th, and we can share that with the commission and see if there's a sale pending with the no protest of the foreclosure process. Open any questions?
Brian, question. The action that Capital Federal may take, may or has taken against the owner is different than the action that we're being asked to take, in that ours is not dependent upon them doing whatever that they're doing, right?
That's correct. It was a little bit of a struggle to get information from them, when you're dealing with mortgages, it's pretty confidential. So, I have basically asked him three questions today in email. One, can he provide me a timeline? Well, no, they can't, other than it started. Secondly, would they be willing to do any repairs between now and whenever that process ended? They are in the process of getting bids to do some repairs, but that takes time. They asked respectively to give them some more time. I think they can come up with some definite plans between now and November. And third, I asked what their position would be on the demolition of the property, and they didn't really address that, other than the fact that it's an asset for them, so they, they have a definite interest in maintaining it. I don't know how much is left on the mortgage, or whatever that may be. I do feel like we've sort of pushed them to start something that they may not have been ready to do, which is not, not a bad thing.
Okay, so then, the one thing that we have before us tonight is, you know, after public hearing, is consider adopting the resolution declaring the house to be unsafe and dangerous in order the owner to commence with substantial repairs, and on and on and on.
Yes.
And the first, the next time we would see it would be for final decision, I guess, on November 11th.
Right. The, October 23rd is identified in the resolution. I gave a little bit of leeway for us, if we get, you know, the way that these things work, we get a lot of information, like the day of. So, we'd like to come back in November 10th and say, here's what we found out. There's been no, no movement, here's what Cap Fed has said, let you guys determine how you wish us to proceed. You know, I will, I will say, not to go into great detail of the inspection, but it's a bi-level house in a, in a nice neighborhood, and the owner has just appeared to simply walk away from it. We found mail on the, on a table, it's completely furnished, as the pictures show, some significant water leaks on the roof, there's significant mold growth on the bottom level of the structure. It really needs to be rehabilitated by someone that has, has the financial resources and the motivation to do so. But based on state statute, you know, you either repair or you don't, and, and, you know, we can't wait any longer.
Generally, with the, we're taking a structure down, and I can't remember the last time we did, well, we did one, I think, since I've been on the commission.
We do.
We've done several, okay. The mold situation, what kind, what kind of processes there? I know there's gotta be some kind of abatement of that.
Yeah, there is. There's no, there's no specific state guidelines on mold remediation, but if you get All Service Pro or one of the, one of those companies, they're gonna, based on what I saw, my opinion is, it needs to be stripped down to the studs, at least on the bottom level, and completely removed appropriately, and dried out, and et cetera, and go from there. So, it can get quite expensive. With the multiple leaks in the ceiling, as you saw in one picture, the upstairs bedroom on the south side, basically, part, basically, half of that sheet rock on the ceiling has collapsed. My guess is because of leaks. And so, there's, there's some issues there, the garage had significant leaks. Looking outside, nothing catches my eye directly that says, wow, this roof is in really bad shape, like some that show some sagging between rafters and such, or three layers of shingles.
Ceiling fell.
Yeah, but, but there's obviously some issues there. We would've never known that unless we got the search warrant.
Yeah. And if, just one more, the, if we remove this house, do we just remove the wooden part of the structure, would we remove foundation and the whole thing?
Well, we typically take the whole thing. I mean, this is a little unusual, because there's a mortgage on the property, and we're talking about a house that is not at the criteria that a lot of them come before you. A lot, a lot of the ones that you see are just in horrendous, terrible shape, huge structural concerns. This one's bad, and it's getting worse, but typically, what we do is, is we take completely down. If there's a basement below grade, we fill it in. So yes, everything would go.
Brian, it sounds like you've obviously attempted contact, and there's been no reciprocation on her end. Legally speaking, if we send her notice, you know, you have X number of days to rehabilitate or we condemn, and she doesn't respond, from a, from a legal standpoint, is a non-response the same as a non-action?
We've done many of these before, and it's always been, you know, it's always been that case, yes. That's my opinion. Tony might have some comment on that.
Yes, as long as we've given notice to the best address.
And we've made reasonable attempts to contact them. If they do not respond, we can proceed.
Okay.
So, if we, if we are to take the action tonight of adopting the resolution, there will be a final contact attempt made to the owner of the property?
We'll mail that resolution, it's required by state statute.
Okay.
So, we'll mail it to the address that we believe she lives at, and I'll try to make several phone calls between now and that date, leave voicemails, and see if anything happens. We'll mail that resolution to Capital Federal, and I'll email Mike Cast tomorrow and give him an update of what we decided tonight, and then, we'll just continue that process. If, if history, you know, repeats itself, we'll have no contact with her.
Okay. Russell, you have anything? Okay. Anything else?
No more questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and begin the public hearing. Entertained a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to open the public hearing made by?
You.
Vice Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Herbert. We gotta divide these up. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is open. We are open for public comment. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, I appreciate your time and your considerations on this. My name is John Williams, I live at 920 Chalk Hill Court. I have lived there 30 years or more. This house has been sitting vacant for 14 years. There's 19 homes on Chalk Hill Court within 300 yards. That's not counting the people that live adjacent on Lawrence Avenue. We have, the neighbors have taken it upon themselves to take care of this property for the last 14 years. There's no leans, as far as I know, because I don't think the city has ever turned a tap to work on the facility, other than to come out and shut the water off on a weekend when one of the neighbors noticed a leak, which caused the water damage inside. We mowed, we've, at our own expense, we've rented a wood chipper, we cleaned up the front of the house. If you've ever looked at the Google Maps Street View, that view was several years prior to when we cleaned it up, you could not see the home. Now, the roof looks pretty firm, but I have it from a man that stood on the roof with a chainsaw and trimmed the trees back, but it's really soft. The pictures really don't do justice. I predict, not having ever been in the house, that the water damage on the south end comes from the rodents and the animals that crawl through that hole through the chimney, and the water damage is a liquid, but it's probably not water. 14 years of animals living in that attic would soften that roof and have it fall. I also question the fact that it should be rehabilitated, because I'm looking at tree trunks growing between the patio and the foundation, and stuff's moving. It just makes me nervous that we'll get somebody in there that will just slam it together, flip it, make a quick profit, and we're stuck with an eyesore problem in the future. Basically, that's all I have to say. Again, I appreciate your all's consideration. I'd like to see us move forward on it pretty rapidly.
Questions to Mr. Williams? Okay, thanks. Other public comment?
Hi, I, too, would like to thank you for allowing us to talk about this. My name's Tyler Kingsbury, I live directly across the street, have to look at it every day. I'll, I'll verify everything he said, we've been taking care of it for 14 years. I've talked to Karen in between that time, I was mowing it when she lived there. She'd come out, she just wasn't even taking care of it when she lived there, and she wouldn't even say nothing but thank you when I was out mowing it, so. As far as the roof, I was the one on the roof, it's bad, it's gotta go. I mean, when I was up there, I was scared to be up there, because you were sinking in, and my brother, I've, I've been a roofer, my brother's a roofer, and it's gotta be, it needs to come down. The facility, I don't know, it's just, it's an upsetting deal, because our neighborhood, we have a great neighborhood, great bunch of people, we all get along, we all help each other, and this, this house, it's kind of consumed us, it's all we talk about, it's just to get rid of it, because it's just an eyesore, it's something that needs to be taken care of, and I appreciate it the city would come in and take care of it. And my questions to the city is, is if they take care of the easement rights, when it's, if they do fill the holes, is the water easement's all taken care of? Two, who takes care of it after that? If the mortgage company owns it, are they gonna take care of the property, the land, until it's sold, or does the city take control and, and, you know, take care of that? So, that's my only thing, I just appreciate it, and thank you for the time to talk about.
Okay. Mr. Todd?
The owner of record, whoever the owner of record is at that point, whether it's gonna be Ms. Brayley or Capital Federal, whoever it is, is gonna have the responsibility of caring for the property, correct?
Aye.
Okay, just so that you know. Other comment?
Good evening, my name is Suzie Nightingale, and I'm the block captain for 99, for Chalk Hill Court, not just 919 is my address. We're very concerned, because next to this house is a young family with a little four-year-old boy and another one on the way, and we're concerned about it, because it is an attractive nuisance, it is a safety hazard, and it's been going on for a long time. My understanding is, it's been abandoned since November of 1999. We have made repeated requests to have something addressed, and we just want it gone, because we do have a nice neighborhood, and we really are wanting to have a better neighborhood, because we want it to be safe for our children. So, thank you very much.
Other public comment? Any other comment on this item? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made to close the public hearing made by Vice Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 3-0. Back to the commission. Well, you know, the hardest thing about this job is to ever take somebody's house down. I mean, it really is. I mean, that's about as, about as bad as you can do. But in this particular case, I think that we have somebody who's abandoned the property, who has decided not to care for it anymore, and I think that the city has done everything that it has within its legal limits to get them to do that. Since that has not happened, I think it is our responsibility to make, make the decision and to adopt the resolution. It's apparent to me that the neighbors have been concerned about their property values, their right to be able to have, you know, decent neighborhood, and have tended to take it upon themselves to care for another piece of property, to be able to ensure that their properties don't become blighted because of it. My recommendation, folks, is that we adopt the resolution and that we declare this to be an unsafe and dangerous structure.
Yes, I agree with that.
You know, the most important thing to me in doing this job as commissioner has been making sure that I'm, I'm being very consistent with my decisions, and you bring up a really good point about, you know, this, this is the second time since I've been on in April that we've had a, you know, a major code violation come before us, and the first one I wasn't a big fan of, but I see this one as different. The, the two situations, what makes them different is that, the first situation was an individual who lived in the property, who was choosing kind of an alternative lifestyle within the property that we were taking issue with, and this one, we're talking about a property that nobody's been in for 15 years potentially. I did have a chance to go visit the property, I live pretty close to it, and I walked over there, and I think that the access point for, for the animals, I think you're exactly right, is the hole in the chimney, where all that poison ivy is growing. And so I think the animals are getting in there, you know, the roof might be structurally safe, but if you can get, if you can enter a home, you know, it's, you're gonna cause damage within it, whether it be people or animals or water. You know, and John, to your point, you know, having been on a roof myself with a chainsaw, every roof you're ever on is too soft. But, but, now, in this case, Mayor, I think you're exactly right, that this is, this situation is- is different, and so I do agree we ought to declare the house to be unsafe and dangerous.
Tyler, the only thing I have to say is, don't get on that roof. Okay. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion then to adopt Resolution Number 7139 declaring the house at Chalk Hill, 912 Chalk Hill Court, to be unsafe and dangerous, and order the owner to repair or remove the structures within the specified time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval of the resolution, and the order made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Vice Mayor Soden. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes three zero. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda are future agenda items. Diane?
Yes, for your meeting next week, neither Casey nor I will be here at your meeting, but you'll be in great hands with Tony and the other staff next week. That fifth Tuesday meeting has been reinstated, and one of your major items will be accepting the list from the Advisory Committee on the vacancy, and then making a determination of who you want to interview and visit at that October 1st special meeting for the interview of applicants for the vacancy. And then we'll have the several items related to the Eldridge Expansion Project, their traffic control plan for the construction activity, and then first reading of the IRB ordinance that follows up on their sales tax exemption for the project. Then we'll have second reading of the ordinance granting the Verizon Wireless with their special use permit to locate a telecommunications tower on the co-op site with the various changes that have been discussed.
Okay.
So that's the focus of next week.
Want to add a bunch more stuff, Tony? We could load it up? Okay. Well, bring us back a lot of great ideas from the ICMA conference, okay?
Will do, thank you.
Okay. You guys have any future agenda items? Okay. Commission items. Diane, I saw gas in Wichita was below $2.
Saw something from Johnson County that was that as well, so.
Yeah.
We're on it.
We got to figure out what the...
We're a special community.
Is preparing a special report for you.
And I've been listening to what Commissioner Herbert said about supply and demand.
Don't try to blame me for this.
You brought it up last week. Okay, we'll leave that alone, okay. Any other Commission item? Nothing. Anything else? Did you want to add, I forget what it was, that you said a little bit ago, about Saturday morning?
9:00 AM, it's, I think it's on there, isn't it?
We put it on?
10:00 AM.
Oh, is it?
The grand opening was what?
Oh, no, I'm talking about the...
The pedestrian?
Yeah, there's a pedestrian, but I think that's under the Bicycle Pedestrian Issues Task Force Meeting Schedule and Information. A linked item, let me double check that. Oh, man, that takes me to, I'm going down a wormhole now.
It's on Saturday at what time?
There's a 9:00 AM Saturday meeting.
Eight to noon, but the public's invited like nine, 10:30 or something like that.
Okay, I might have to...
Nine to 10.
That's, yeah, that was my understanding, was that it was nine to 10, okay.
Good. Any other calendar items? I will find out on the Peaslee Center tomorrow, about Saturday morning.
Okay.
Okay. And look forward to seeing everybody Thursday afternoon at the Peaslee Center for the Ribbon Kind of Big Deal.
I'll be going to that.
It'll be a big deal. We'll all talk at that. Now, I'm just dragging the meeting out, because I want everybody to get their monies away. You guys have any other calendar items? We got to keep the media here all night. Nothing. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I will second it.
Motion made in second to adjourn made by Vice Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Herbert, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all.
I think some people are still walking in.